All right. Conricavene to open session at 6:36. First order of business is to read out the actions taken in closed session.
The Board in open session will vote on the expulsion of a student ID number 737876 pursuant to educational code 72122. The Board will now vote on this item.
Okay, we have a unanimous yes vote. One, I don't have to read the trustee vacant, right? Unanimous yes vote and one student advisory abstention. Okay, next we have, well, you have more to read out, right Jim? You have resolutions? Oh, that's just the actions, okay. So then next we have the invocation led by trustee Wright and follow that, pledge of allegiance by trustee J.
Our Father who art in heaven, we thank thee for gathering us together in this board meeting. We thank thee for the freedoms that we have and to live in this great land of America. We pray for our military members and veterans and specifically we pray this evening for the families, friends, and everyone who is affected by the tragedy of the recent shooting and killing of five service members in Chattanooga, Tennessee. We are thankful for our students and our dedicated faculty, staff, and administration in our district. Blessed is in our decisions and efforts this evening. We are thankful for the recent rains and continue to pray for additional rain that it might relieve us from our drought conditions. We sincerely pray for guidance and do so in his name. Amen.
Could you please join me in pledge of allegiance to our wonderful country, to our flag?
(inaudible)
Okay, somebody's phone is on. That's gonna get annoying. Mine's off. All right, next we have recognitions, we have resolution. Jim, would you like to read out the first one?
Let me turn to it. Nancy Padberg, Board of Trustees. Whereas Nancy M. Padberg has served on the Board of Trustees since 1998, having won five consecutive elections and serving in leadership roles as president, vice president, and clerk, and whereas Nancy M. Padberg was an avid and active supporter of the Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College foundations, garnering donations for annual fundraising and increasing opportunities for students to attend college, and whereas Nancy M. Padberg and her late husband Tom were passionate supporters of the college athletic programs and teams and attended many sporting events, and upon his passing sponsored the President's Cup to raise $15,000 in scholarship funds, and whereas Nancy M. Padberg attended hundreds of meetings, forums, ceremonies, workshops, commencements, and dedications, and delivered many speeches underscoring her appreciation to faculty and staff for their support for students, and whereas Nancy M. Padberg took a keen interest in students who serve others as veterans and those pursuing nursing, allied health, and human services careers, having spent much of her own career in social services, and whereas Nancy M. Padberg was a strong champion for students and met with local, county, state, and federal elected officials to advocate for policy and legislative changes that would benefit thousands of students. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby express their deep appreciation to Nancy M. Padberg for her dedication to faculty, staff, and administrators throughout our district and her enduring contributions to generations of students at Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College, and the Advanced Technology and Educational Park.
Now we have a roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Momont.
Aye.
All right. From any of the indications of why she's stepping down, she's not here this evening, so I'll accept this on her behalf, and I'll make sure it gets to her. So, thank you very much. Next we have Irvine Valley College Speech and Debate Team.
Irvine Valley College Speech and Debate Team, 2015 National Champions. Whereas the 2014-15 Irvine Valley College Speech and Debate Team won the National Parliamentary Debate Association Year-Along Sweep States Award as the top community college squad at the national championships in Kansas City, Kansas, on March 14th through 16th, 2015, and whereas the year-long team points with MPDA ranked Irvine Valley College as eighth in the nation among all two and four-year schools, placing between the United States Air Force Academy, seventh, and the University of Oregon, ninth, and whereas the team scored more points than all community colleges, including Moorpark College, 10th place, Orange Coast College, 17th place, Modesto Junior College, 19th place, and El Camino College, 22nd place. And whereas this national championship continues, IVC's a record-breaking strings of NPDA national championships with the team winning titles in 2000, 2002, 2003, 2004, 2005, 2006, 2007, 2012, 2013, 2014, and 2015, and whereas the team had 108 students competing at tournaments throughout the season, including seven students named to the Pacific Southwest Collegiate Forensic Association All-Conference Academic Team, and whereas the coach, the team was coached by the dedicated IVC's forensic coaching staff, which consisted of Edwin Tiongson, Juliana French, Bill Neeson, Jen Page, Willie Washington, Scott Tugel, Jay Aronson, Kayla Graney, Bill Eady, Jason Hong, Kelly Kehoa, Suzie Verizia. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate the 2014-15 Irvine Valley Speech and Debate Team and its coaches for their outstanding national championship season and excellent representation of Irvine Valley College.
All right, roll call.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Momont.
Aye.
Good evening and thank you. Linda Fontanella here, Vice President for Student Services, standing in for Dr. Glenn Rockmore. And as you can see, we are very proud of our Speech and Debate Team. Professor Tungsum will say a few words.
Thank you very much. Thank you Chancellor Porter, thank you trustee Wright, thank you Vice President Fontanella. We also want to thank President Rockmore, Vice President Justice, Vice President Kuchitarian, as well as several individuals in making this national championship possible. I need to stress the importance of our administration, our faculty and coaching staff, as well as our students. From top-down, from our presidents to our vice presidents to our administration staff, they've been very pivotal in allowing us to be successful. Facilities and maintenance with Jeff Herbert, Nikki Pulienda, in providing us rooms, facilities, taking care of us and having our vans gassed and ready to go so we can leave at, wow, 5:30, 6:45 in the morning to drive at our next event. Cannot, we also cannot do the things that we do without the assistance of our administrative assistant Carol Dana. Moreover, the list of coaches were read by trustee Wright, but I also want to stress the importance of having great support from older faculty that retired in Craig Grossman and also a forensics mentor in Sheila Grossman, as well as of our biggest sage, our biggest mentor, Dr. Gary Rybald. Moreover, I'd like to thank all the 108 students that have gone through our program, that have come in with wide eyes, eager to learn. I'd like to thank the 20 to 25 core students that are there every single practice, that show up eager to learn, eager to argue, and the 17 students that specifically assisted us in winning this national championship. Three, two of them are here with us right now, and these two individuals are actually our future as our team captains for the upcoming year. We here have second-year competitor Kavya Macom and then second-year competitor Anthony Kim. And it's these leaders that are going to assist us in making next year's, forensics years one of the best. Why? Well, two big reasons. Number one, we're the actual tournament institution that will be hosting the 2016 Fire-O-Pie National Championships in April of next year. So Board of Trustees, you might want to mark the calendar in April, I believe it's April the 6th, but I'll get back to you. It'll be an opening banquet that we would love to have you all attend. Moreover, a big event that were also happening for us in the forensics team is that we will be heading to China in May of 2016. We anticipate in doing several fundraising events and sending several students to engage in international competition across the pond, if you will. So, we're a proud program, rich in history, and our students work hard, day in and day out, and I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, the rest of the coaching staff, thank you Board of Trustees, thank you Chancellor Porter, thank you trustee Wright for your kind words, thank you Vice President Fontanella, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next we have a commendation from Saddleback College President Todd Burnett. We'll commend Phi Theta Kappa chapter.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we could have Dean Kevin O'Connor and the Phi Theta Kappa students come up here. We wanted to congratulate Saddleback College's Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society Chapter, which had a very successful year again. For the second time, our Beta Epsilon Beta Chapter received a five-star recognition, which is the highest recognition bestowed by Phi Theta Kappa nationally. The five-star chapter plan is a roadmap for creating strong chapters, which in turn creates strong members and a robust college campus. The plan puts the mission of Phi Theta Kappa into action through five levels of engagement that progress from local campus involvement to regional and international involvement. Two of our members were placed on the State and the All USA Academic Team, Baaman Ramazani and Michael LaWitter, and Dalton Leftwich was the recipient of the International Orban-Dorf Lifeline to Completion Scholarship, and Merrill Lumboy earned the Jack Kent Cookie Foundation Scholarship. I'd like to recognize our outgoing President Danielle Irwin and two of our chapter officers, Vice President of Leadership Josephina Garrettton and Vice President of Service Jonathan Macias, for their excellent work over the past year. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Now we're on to public comments. I have one poll here or call for Michael Hamilton.
How are you this evening?
Good.
Mr. President, members of the Board, my name is Mike Hamilton. I am the recently elected President of the Saddleback College Foundation. I'm here for two reasons tonight. One is to also recognize trustee Padberg for her contributions. I know you consider her one of your own. We also consider her six years on our foundation board as one of our own. And she is, as you so noted in the resolution, she was deeply involved in fundraising for us, for our gala. Also recognized the early need for a new stadium. It was certainly powerful in her commitment to getting the message out, the benefit that not only our students would get from a new stadium, but also the communities which we serve. So we want to thank trustee Padberg as well. Mr. Chancellor, we have, we have a couple gifts for her. We know she's not here tonight, but we'd love to get those to your office and assume that you'll take care of getting those to her.
Yes.
Thank you. The second item, second recognition is for our outgoing President of the Foundation Board, Jim Leach. Jim has just finished a three-year term as President of our Board. He has also been with us as a member of the Board for five years. Jim, it's kind of almost impossible to say thank you for what you've done for the foundation. Your energy and your inspiration has served, I think, your Board well. I think it's served the college well. It certainly has helped create a number of new recruits to the Foundation Board. During your time, as I look back, endowment assets have grown from, it actually grew 31% to 6.4 million under your tenure. Foundation assets grew by 56% to 10.4 million. And lastly, and some would say most importantly, scholarship dollars awarded to students went up 216% over your time of service to $733,000. Jim, I know you've committed a lot of personal time, not only to the Foundation Board, but to a lot of community activities, in particular the South County Economic Coalition. Some might say those are your responsibility, and I'd say no. In fact, as I think as a college community and as a foundation, we've benefited from those connections that you've helped make. It's helped make our Board stronger, and I want to thank you for that. We hope that while the Saddleback College Foundation and the, I'd say the Saddleback community itself has benefited from those relationships, we hope at some point those relationships give you some return for your time invested. So thank you for your time on the Foundation Board, Jim. Thank you on behalf of the Saddleback community, for our students, for our faculty, and for our staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's all, Mr. President.
Okay, seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go and go to Board Reports. I'll start with trustee Lang tonight.
First, it gives me great pleasure, before they vacate the door, just to say congratulations again to the IVC Speech and Debate Program. I had the opportunity to attend their banquet this year, and I can assure you, there's really no finer group of both individuals that are involved with the program, as well as students that participated in. So, well-deserved congratulations to all you folks. Good night. Secondly, I did want to also just pay my personal respects to trustee Padberg. She was a great trustee for this district. She served, you know, the entire time that I've been on this Board, has been a great colleague, has done a lot, as you've heard from folks, in terms of outreach for Saddleback College and in the community, and she'll be missed. Thank you.
Trustee J.
I also want, I will miss Nancy Padberg. She was a great person and a wonderful trustee, and I already miss her. And then what I wanted to report was that I went to the Summer Theater, and it was fantastic. I saw Joey Sellers on Friday night when he was doing the Big Ben, and I was so impressed with everything, especially the arrangements of the sound, the stage, all the technical, technical things that were put up there. They are, Grease is going to be coming this weekend, I recommend you that you all go. I had so, for the first week I was in Vermont, and my best friends went, and they were so impressed. They've always gone to the theater arts, down to the McKinney Theater, but this time they went up on the green and listened to that concert, and all they could do to me was just rave about it and rave about it. And I think it's really something wonderful. I think it's going to be a great advertisement for the college, and I enjoyed it, and I can't wait to go see Grease.
Thank you. I too will express my gratitude for having the time I was able to serve with trustee Padberg. I wasn't on the Board nearly as long as some others, but it certainly was very helpful to have her guidance and wisdom early on when I was still new at it, and will miss some of that guidance, even though I've been doing this for a while. It never hurts to tap into those resources, which I now get to do with trustee Lang and trustee Melchiker solely. As far as attendance, I did just happen today to go to the ACC OC, which I invited member to attend. It's an economic committee, or environmental committee, I'm sorry, dealing with, you know, coming up with ways for cities to work together to meet some of the assembly bills that are passed, involve the environment. And today's discussion was dealing with waste management and the concepts of how to get credits for being as green as possible. And it was mentioned in the meeting today to start working with the large, many municipalities within the county, UCI, Cal State Fullerton, and the many community colleges, as to what we're doing with waste management and how we can help the cities meet their goals. So, just give you the heads up that you might be getting contacted by that committee to either make presentations or provide information that we can use in that committee. But other than that, still on summer break for me. Next is trustee Jamal.
Thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations to the IVC Speech and Debate Team. What an incredible accomplishment for them. Well, I think we're being a little too genteel and kind here, talking about Nancy. So, the first time I met Nancy Padberg, she told me to trim my beard and fix my tie. And I think that's one of the reasons why I still haven't done that, the tie's still a little disheveled. I think that that's what we miss most about Nancy. I think you always knew where you stood with Nancy. She was assertive, she was very opinionated, and you always knew she was assertive and opinionated. And I think that's why, I met her in 2012, when I, about the time I decided to run for office. Didn't quite know what to make of her, sometimes I liked her, sometimes I couldn't stand her. I could hear her grumbling under her breath as I'm speaking right now at my board report, whispering to Gary Porter, you know, he's taking too long, cut him off, writing Post-it notes to him. Did you ever see her do that constantly? She didn't use her phone, but she'd constantly text or message Gary by handwriting. You know, if you watch Q and A, there wasn't much Q and A when Nancy was President because the meeting was orderly and it finished about an hour earlier than, than your meeting's TJ, but you're still doing it. Still doing a pretty good job. So, we love her. We dearly miss her. She hasn't been here for several months. She certainly kept us on our toes, she kept us entertained, and what a great, what great years of service she gave to the Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College, and ATEP, this entire district, and well said in the resolution, and we wish her the best for the rest of her life. Thank you.
Trustee Wright.
I also want to express my appreciation to Nancy Padberg for her dedication to students, faculty, staff, and administration throughout our district for the past 17 years that she served on the Board, and her many enduring contributions to generations of students on our campus. She was an absolutely superb trustee, and I miss her. Let me talk for just a couple of minutes about several events that I attended. On Thursday, June the 25th, I attended the event sponsored by the Exchange Club of Irvine in the rededication of the Freedom Shrine located in the Irvine Valley College Library. I didn't realize they had one, but they do have one, and it's, looks great. The Exchange Club, Dr. Michael Spitzer conducted the ceremony and presented a plaque and certificate to IVC President Glenn Rockmore. Then on Thursday, July 9th, I attended Saddleback College's Medical Assistant Program, or Certificates of Achievement, and Administration Clinical and Comprehensive, or Comprehensive Medical Assisting were presented. There were a total of 59 graduates for the year 2015. And then before I, before I end, I want to applaud both IVC and Saddleback College on one of the, their recent mailings. I don't know whether you've seen this or not, but this is a card that was sent to all the homes, and it is both from Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College. And I think this is great, and I applaud you for this great job. Thank you.
Trustee Melchiker.
Yeah, I too want to echo the sentiments of my other trustees and thank trustee Nancy Padberg for the many, many years, for the 17 years that she served our district as a trustee and making a lasting impression on the lives of many, many faculty, staff, and students for many years. So, thank you for the many years of service. I also want to thank Mike Hamilton for speaking to our board meeting. We're looking forward to working with you, and I know I want to thank Jim Leach for actually recruiting you, if that's my understanding. And, and I will miss Jim Leach. He's done a wonderful job everywhere I go, I see him. He's the President of the South Orange County Economic Coalition, but he always introduces me, and I really always appreciate that. So, and the Saddleback College Foundation has done some incredible growth in giving incredible scholarships to our students, so I thank you very much for all that. I, like many of the other professors and staff members and classified staff members, have been taking the time, when things have slowed down a little bit in the summer, to get caught up on many of the issues that I needed to get caught up on, including the state, the federal, and the local issues. So, and I'm looking forward to, in just three short weeks, to having Professional Development Week, and seeing many of you come back for Professional Development Week. And I attend most of those, and I really enjoy learning about what's happening at all the colleges and in many of the disciplines. And also, a week after that, classes are starting. And so I wish all of the professors and staff and everyone a very good year. Welcome back, and you do good work. We do the best of just about anyone for our students, and I'm very proud of all of you and all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Student trustee Momont.
I too would like to commemorate trustee Padberg's service, though I never got to serve a meeting with her. I only heard the best of her, and I'm only happy to hear that she's, she's leaving on a good foot. However, I'd like to focus my report on a different topic. Last week, it was the end of Ramadan for me, I'm a Muslim, and this means it was the end of our fasting and our holy month, and at our mosque, I was only sad to hear that the logistics of our local mosque, we couldn't handle the amount of people that were coming to prayer this year, and parking and stuff like that. But what I heard after brought great joy and pride to my heart. I heard that Saddleback College actually opened up our gym to the local mosque, and I was happy to come here this last Friday and attend prayer here and see Professor, President Todd Burnett welcome all of us for our prayer. And so, I'm happy to be part of an organization that's so open in serving to our greater community.
Thank you. Before I let Chancellor Porter do his, I did remember one other thing. If you get a chance to go to the OC Fair, Saddleback College has a table in the Exhibition Hall. I don't remember which festival, carnival, or whatever products it is in, but it's there, and I recommend people stop by. They said they get a lot of people come by, so that's success. All right, Chancellor's report.
The discussion item tonight is on our college's progress towards the student's success key indicators. This report is being made at all community college districts in California. Its purpose is to provide transparency and accountability for the services we're providing our students, and the data shows how well the colleges are doing in remedial instruction, job training, retention, and completion rates. instruction, job training, retention, and completion rates. Just about everything has already been said about Nancy. She certainly was blunt, but there was never any question that she was dedicated to this district. She loved our colleges and she was available for just anything that we wanted. She's been on the board as long as I've been in this district. So as of now, when she's no longer on the board, it's the first time that I've had that situation. When she was board president, I got to know her much better and I can attest that she almost lived and breathed this district and I shall miss her very much.
All right. College presidents' report. I'll start with president Burnett because you're here.
Because I'm here. Thank you. First off, on behalf of Saddleback College, we'd also like to congratulate and thank Nancy Padberg for her years of service to the board and her tireless advocacy and support for Saddleback College. In fact, we have, as you all know, a tradition we do. It's one of our highest honors is we give a key to the college and we will give this to chancellor if you could give to Nancy Padberg. And the plaque that goes with it says, "The key to Saddleback College symbolizes the trusted friendship of Nancy M. Padberg with our students, employees, and community and is presented in appreciation of her 17 years of dedicated leadership." So we wanted to again thank Nancy and she will be greatly missed and certainly all those athletic contests. As was already mentioned, we're in the thick of summer and although the start of fall semester is fast approaching, we are all working extremely hard in preparing for Professional Development Week that trustee Milchker had mentioned. That begins August 10th through the 14th and then, of course, start of classes on August 17th. We really hope, as we do every semester, see all the trustees attend some, if not many, of our events on Professional Development Week and we'll get a list out to an agenda of the things we would recommend for you to attend. Meanwhile, as was also mentioned, this weekend finishes our Summer of Theater season and that's with our production of Grease, which is a 50s rock and roll musical. This is the second year, if you did not know, of our new Saddleback tradition of offering our free weekend shows for the community. So we hope to see you and invite you all, for your family and friends, to come on out on Friday night. The show's at 7:30. Recommend you get there around 6:00 and then Saturday as well. And it's up there right in the quad. Thank you.
Thank you. And standing in for Dr. Rockmore.
Thank you. Linda Fontanella, Vice President of Student Services, standing up for Dr. Rockmore. We'd also like to offer a certificate of commendation for Nancy Padberg and the certificate reads, "For demonstrating throughout her long career as trustee of South Orange Community College District, a passion for academic excellence, boundless support of faculty and staff, as well as a tremendous focus on creating opportunities for students of all backgrounds to attend and thrive in college." So we'll be leaving that for her tonight. I'd also like to introduce to you a new employee at Irvine Valley College. We have Sarah Makiko Kumisaka. Sarah is our new Director of Outreach. She will oversee the outreach efforts for Irvine Valley College as well as support the Student Equity Plan. She comes to us from the University of Utah where she had a long background in both outreach and student equity. So Sarah, we're proud to have you here. And finally, I wanted to mention that starting August 3rd through the 6th, we will hold our first annual Laser Week event. This is a four-day event for orientation for our incoming students and continuing students. Each day, the events will start at 9 o'clock and go through 3:30. It will be an opportunity for students to complete their matriculation processes as well as to go to many, many workshops, including faculty mentoring workshops that the faculty will put on. We will have lunch and a theme around lunch each day for them. And on the last day, it will be a day of both student and parent workshops. So we're really looking forward to holding this. It's called WOW Week at some four-year universities. We're going to call it Laser Week and we're really looking forward to having it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no one from ASG and no board reports. This time, while the presenters for the discussion item get ready, this is the natural pause for ducking out if anybody would like to do so without being noticed too much. Not Utah.
Hello again, everybody. As chancellor Porter had mentioned, we're very pleased tonight to present the annual state scorecard results, actually the student success scorecard results that we do every year. And this is for Saddleback and IVC, of course. Just one thing is we want a few points for the board to keep in mind when you're hearing the results. First off is that these numbers are based on a six-year cohort that actually started back in '08 and '09. And the reason why I bring that up is because, as you know, for the last couple of years, both of our colleges, in fact, the whole state, has taken initiatives to increase student success through the student success initiatives, recommendations, funding, et cetera. We've all been taking a lot of effort. So what we want to impress upon everybody is that the results you see tonight aren't going to reflect a lot of the efforts that we've started two years ago. So in about three or four years is when we'll really start seeing cohorts that have gone through the entire student success efforts that we've been doing for completion. So I just wanted to mention that. The second thing is that, once again, Saddleback and IVC have been very, have done consistently well. In fact, not only have we been above the state average on six of the seven metrics which you'll hear about, but actually IVC and Saddleback are in the top 10 on every single metric out of the 113 community colleges in our state. And that's something I think we all should be very, 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 very proud of. But with that said, we think we can do better. And the other point that I want to get across is that we are looking to do better and increase all of our student success metrics. For Saddleback specifically, we are really looking and you'll see, we really want to see improvement in our CTE completion rate and we do want to do better in ESL. However, ESL, which you'll see, is something that we've actually made great progress even in one year, but we would like to see more progress with all rates, but particularly our CTE completion rate, which we believe we're not up to where we really would like to be. I'd also just like to emphasize that this scorecard is only one set of metrics to judge our success of our students and our institutions. And right now, the college at Saddleback, and Linda will talk in a minute about IVC, we are looking at additional metrics to judge our success for our college. And some of the things we're going to take into account, you've heard about the Student Equity Plan, the student success in itself, our efforts, and then, of course, economic and workforce development. So there's just a few notes just to give you while you're hearing the presentation. And with that, we have Linda Fontanella here to represent Glenn Rockmore.
Thank you, Todd. And Todd pretty much covered the purpose of our scorecard metrics. But at Irvine Valley College, we use the scorecard completion rate as a key performance indicators. So we are at our most, so we can achieve our most strategic objective and that is increasing student completions and reducing the achievement gap. We also use this performance indicator in our district-wide strategic plan to evaluate progress on Objective 2.1, and that is increasing student completions rates while preserving access, increasing quality, and increasing in achieving the, closing the achievement gap.
Good evening, President Penegras and Board of Trustees members. I'm Denise Enziang. I am the District Director of Research Planning and Data Management. And as we have done in the past, I'm going to start with an overview, kind of just give you some highlights, refresh your memory on the metrics, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues, Dr. Hayward and Dr. Ortega, to actually show you the trends. So we're going to start with just kind of where did it come from? This came from the accountability reporting for community colleges. We'll then go into the actual metrics and you'll look at the five-year trends. We're also going to do a summary for each college and then how we're utilizing. That's what the presentation will contain. So if you remember back in 2004, this is based in AB 1417. It was a legislation that established the accountability reporting and it's the basis for what we're now calling the Student Success Scorecard. There are four tiers of the accountability framework. There's a state of the system, which shows across all of our 112, I guess 13 colleges now, the access and completion. What we're going to focus on tonight is the scorecard, which is really each individual college's metrics. It measures student progress and completion and it's also disaggregated by several student demographic categories. You can also see in the framework, you can also go onto the data mart, which is at the state chancellor's website and drill down further if you're interested in specific areas. And then there's also the ability to actually get the data individually detailed for our campus, which the research offices can also download and do more analysis. So as you have in your packet, you can go to the link and you can actually look at not just our campuses, but all the campuses if you wish, and it's in the same format. The college profile is the main page you'll see at the beginning and it is based on the population in 2013, 14. That's different from then when you go into the fine main scorecard metrics. And those metrics are actually, as Dr. Burnett mentioned, cohorts. And they're grouped into two categories. You have momentum points and completion outcomes. So the first three are the remedial progress rate for math, English, and ESL. That's one tab. You have persistence and then 30-unit completion rates. And then in the completion outcomes, you'll see degree, certificate, transfer, transfer prepared as one rate, and then completion among CTE or Career Technical Education students. And just as a note in the slide, you'll see that you can also break out persistence, 30 units, and the completion outcomes into two subcategories. You can look at the students who are prepared in what we're calling college-prepared, which means they took at least a college-level math or English. And then also, by the students who are not prepared, students who lowest course attempted was math or English in the remedial area. So that's how the metrics are divided. What I'm going to do is try to quickly highlight, every year, the chancellor's office solicits feedback and there's an advisory group that meets and does some changes to the scorecard. Sometimes it's cosmetic and other times it's actual changes in the calculation of the metric. So I'm going to go, there's four major changes that occurred. First is the percent of first-generation students to college. This is now included in the profile, as you see kind of highlighted in the circle. And it's based on data that they've started to collect on students' highest level of their parent or guardian, at least one. So if one of their parent has a college education, then they wouldn't be considered a first-generation student. But if both parents are below college education, they are considered first-generation. So you'll notice that rate. And that's a new data element, so they're still gathering more and more data from all campuses. The second change is revision to the CTE metric. It gets pretty technical, but we weren't capturing apprentice students in the metric. They've now included that because they can actually look at the outcome data for apprenticeship. They're matching this data to a database that shows completion of apprenticeship in the outcome. They also took out transfer prepared, which meant they were including students who were looking more like transfer in the cohort. So they've eliminated that to focus it specifically on CTE students. The third and the fourth changes are display of cohort size. As Dr. Burnett mentioned, you have to kind of put your mind into the cohort methodology, which means it starts at a certain year, six years ago, and tracks them across that time to see if they've accomplished any of these metrics. And one of the feedback they got from the field was, it's a rate. We don't know what intensity that rate is. How many students are in that metric? So what you'll see is circled on the bottom of the PowerPoint, you'll see a little N equals 1,352. So those are how many students are in that rate. So you'll see that included now in the scorecard. One of the feedback, and I just wanted to mention, is they had a lot of questions on why are they so small? And most of these are first-time students, so we isolate them to first-time students and it's only about 30% of enrollment across the state. So you're going to get a much smaller cohort. You're also looking at our matching with social security numbers. And if we aren't getting that data, we're not able to match students at that level. So we're losing about 10%. And also, we're looking at course-taking patterns over the first three years. So they have to have that data in order to make the cohort. So that's a real, a new addition. And lastly, the metric profile, it's an additional tab highlighted in the circle that's view rates and also view metrics. And it's an additional tab to show you the demographics of the cohorts. So as you're looking at the N size of the cohort, you'll actually be able to see what that population looks like. So now you're up to speed on what has changed in the metrics and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hayward and Dr. Ortega to give you the trends at IVC and Saddleback.
Thank you. And Craig Hayward, Director of Research Planning and Accreditation at Irvine Valley College. And the metric that you have on the screen in front of you is the summation of the momentum point metrics. This is the completion rate for IVC, Saddleback, and for the state. IVC is the blue line, Saddleback's the red line, and the state is the golden line. Here you can see the general trend inching up for IVC and staying fairly stable and then kind of inching up in the most recent year for Saddleback and showing sort of an arc for the state. What we did this year is we broke this metric out into looking at those subgroups, those subcohorts that Denise was talking about, the, those that are prepared for college, those that come in testing into college-level math and college-level English, and then those that are in what they call the remedial or unprepared cohort. And so here you can see that IVC is in the blue lines and the solid blue lines are the prepared cohorts. Saddleback is the red lines and the solid red line is the prepared cohort. Both of those solid lines are higher, as you might expect, than the dashed lines representing the unprepared cohorts. Very importantly, when we break these out, you see different trends for the different subgroups. This is very important because the completion rate is, as Denise mentioned and Todd mentioned and Dr. Fontanella mentioned, a key performance indicator in the district-wide strategic plan. So a more in-depth understanding of what's going on in this rate is valuable to us as we attempt to increase student completion across the district. The next rate is the overall 30-units rate. This is one of the momentum points. And you can see here that both Saddleback and IVC are above the state average in the achievement of this momentum point, the accumulation of 30 credit units. And the overall persistence rates for IVC, Saddleback, and for the state, this is the rate at which students who are in the cohort return to the college from fall to fall. So from their first fall are they here the following fall. So they're enrolled in three primary terms at a semester's college. That would be fall, spring, and then the subsequent fall. We don't count summer. And these rates are in the 70%. And now, Dr. Ortega.
For the next metric, the math remedial progress rate, this is the percentage of credit students who begin at any level below transfer in math and then successfully complete a transfer-level course in math within six years. Over the five-year reporting period, IVC consistently performs around 39%. There was an upswing in 2010, 2011 with a rate of 46. Saddleback has consistently performed around 39% and both campuses are well above the state average. For the English remedial progress rate, it's pretty much the same as the math. These are students, credit students who attempted, who started off at any level These are students, credit students, who attempted, who started off at any level below transfer, who successfully completed an English level, English transfer-level course within six years. Both colleges have been pretty consistent in their performance. However, IVC shows a dip in 2012, 2013 because there was a mislabeling of lab courses. So that explains that little dip there. However, as you can see, both colleges perform well above the state average. For the ESL remedial progress rate for IVC, Saddleback, and the state, both colleges are showing improvement. Saddleback has nearly doubled its rate when compared to the 2009, 2010 scorecard to that of 2013, 2014. And both colleges perform below the state average, however, both are rapidly approaching the state average. And then finally, the overall CTE completion rate for both colleges and the state. When examining the past five reporting periods, IVC has moved from just below the state average to passing it within the last, for the last two reporting periods. And Saddleback has remained somewhat stable and above the state average for the five reporting periods. I'll let Dr. Hayward talk about IVC's performance summary.
Thank you. We have a few highlights from the slides that you just seen. At 64%, the completion rate for IVC is nearly 20 points above the state average. In fact, that is the 99th percentile out of all of the colleges in the state. Our ESL remedial progress rate continues to improve. We note that when you look at the demographics there, age is a major factor. Our young ESL students do quite well, but our older ESL students do not. And so we continue to explore those demographics and what the implications are there for improving our ESL progress rate. And the English remedial progress rate appears in the most recent cohort to be showing some early signs of responding to our acceleration initiative, which has been gearing up over the past several years in accelerating remedial education in English.
Just to summarize Saddleback's performance, like IVC, Saddleback outperforms the statewide average on six of the seven metrics. The overall completion rate is 57.7, which is about 11 points higher than the state average. And our remedial progress rate, although it is increasing and increasing a lot, it is obscured by the fact that there is a cohort size and age distribution. Many of our younger students are completing at about a 51% completion rate, whereas our older students are probably at about a 10% completion rate. So that definitely impacts the numbers. Dr. Hayward?
So I will talk about some implications for planning and continuous quality improvement. As we've mentioned, the completion metric is approved by the district-wide, has been approved by the district-wide planning council as a key performance indicator in our district-wide strategic plan and the strategic plans for Saddleback and IVC. We are engaged in ongoing monitoring of the scorecard. And as was mentioned, we have access to more detailed data, which we are examining. And reporting back on this to the strategic planning bodies will occur annually as part of our strategic planning process. And we actively are using these metrics to examine our processes and look for ways that we can improve institutional effectiveness in our remedial work in our CTE areas and in our overall completion. And scorecard metrics are also actively being used in our student equity plans.
All right. Thank you very much. We have a request to speak from trustee Jamal.
Thank you for your presentation, both IVC and Saddleback. Just a quick question. I think one of the seven, six out of seven indicators were higher than the state. One area that seems not to be is the ESL remedial progress. So what specifically can be done to get us seven out of seven in that area?
Well, I can speak to some of the reforms that are underway, which include a restructuring of the ESL sequence at IVC, which aligns it with our remedial English. So there's been a renaming of the courses to correspond, so that, for instance, our Writing 201 is now complemented by an ESL 201, and our Writing 301 is complemented by an ESL 301. So for the more academically-oriented ESL students, this ESL pattern and pathway is more compelling because it leads directly into transfer-level English, our Writing 1 class. There's also some discussion of whether there might be room for a non-credit ESL sequence.
Yeah, one of the things about the ESL, particularly at Saddleback, is that our ESL is larger than a non-credit program. This metric only deals with credit ESL programs. So a majority of our students are actually in the non-credit side. So we do want to let you know, this is not reflection of our entire ESL program. It's just the credit portion. That's why on there, when Nicole mentioned it's the cohort size, it's because it's a very small number of students. So keep that in mind. And our non-credit side is a whole different metrics, and we're looking at those success rates. In addition, I might add, as you all know, due to the adult education programs we're doing, and Saddleback actually just got approved to the state, our curriculum for adult education was approved by the state at a record pace and level, we were going to start having more sequencing, like Craig had just mentioned, at much lower levels below, which will bring him to go up to our ESL into our classes. So we're very excited on ESL and the great work that our ESL faculty and Dean Kevin O'Connor are doing.
And for Irvine Valley College, our ESL students have shown up as some of those students who are experiencing disproportionate impact in the student equity plan. And the student equity work group is very cognizant of this and supportive of it. And therefore, we have allocated about $55,000 to the faculty members who are working on this program to support those students and bringing them up to a level of success.
All right. Trustee Milchker.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. I thought it was an excellent presentation. I know that we were required by the Student Success Act of 2012 to do these student completion rates in all the seven different cohorts, seven different areas. And I know that we, in all the academic areas, we do far above the state. I was just wondering how you work with this, if you have a number of students that are just lifelong learners, that are taking the Chinese class or the Spanish class, and how these students impact our completion rates? And what do you do about them? Thank you.
The first part, which is, they are included if they are getting a grade, or, you know, it's for credit. So it is problematic. I think we, it's hard to take them out of the cohort, given the criteria. However, I think if they are lifelong learners, and we know they are more, they look like they're more in a meritist program, or they're more of a certain group, we are able to disaggregate them locally. But it still would behoove us to try to lobby for other changes in the metric if we can tell that they're getting included in large numbers.
Thank you.
So the cohort formation excludes a number of students, those who already have degrees, for instance, are not going to be, so it's only first-time college students. And they also need to take, within three years of their first enrollment, a math or an English class, and accumulate six credit units. So that filters out some of the noise and focuses it more on a kind of an academic, more academically-oriented cohort. But of course, you know, nothing's perfect.
All right. Seeing no further requests to speak, no more questions. Thank you very much for your presentation. All right. Next, we move on to the consent items. Do I have any polls?
5.3, 5.8.
5.3, 5.8.
Okay. Trustee Jamal.
Mine was 5.3.
Okay. Any other requests for polls? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion for the balance.
Second.
Got a motion from trustee Lang, a second from somewhere over here. Trustee Wright.
Doesn't matter.
All right. So we'll go ahead and vote on the balance of the consent calendar. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisor yes. Okay, with that, 5.3. Trustee Wright.
The question is, as you look at the cost increase, it's doubled. And that's what I was, my question was, why has it doubled? I mean, it was originally $60,000, or $60,000, $60,104, and now it's going to be another $60,000. That seems like a large amount.
Correct. This is related to the Project A400, the liberal arts building at the IVC campus. During the construction and installation of the building envelope, this is our building envelope consultant that we're referencing here. And during the installation of the building envelope, that would be the plaster and the windows and some other exterior building finishes, it rained in the springtime, and there were leaks in the system. And so our building envelope consultant has had to work more than what he was originally hired for in order to help us determine, do more of a forensic analysis on why that's happened, and what we can do to make that, make an improvement so that the building doesn't leak. In this district, we're very, very sensitive to leaky buildings and do above and beyond to ensure that when they're finally constructed, we don't have that as a problem. So we have asked our building envelope consultant to perform additional efforts for us, and also to provide us with some recommendations to the contractor to ensure that we're going to get a dry building at the quality that we originally contracted.
Okay. So, wait, can I follow? Trustee Lang.
Yeah, so I was also, had the same concerns that trustee Wright. And I think what concerns me is whether, you know, when we originally let this contract, had we known that there would be these additional problems, I guess, that we've experienced, would we have hired the same firm or not? You know, it really comes down to me to be a contracting problem on our part. You know, did we put everybody on the same footing to begin with in bidding this contract? And now all of a sudden, here we are, and we're doubling the size of the contract.
So would we have hired this contractor? The person that we're talking about is a consultant that oversees the contractor.
Pardon me, I, yes, the consultant.
So you're asking me if we would hire the consultant? Absolutely. This person is keeping us in our best position for negotiating the highest quality of this building. I consider them to be one of the finest building envelope consultants that I've worked with.
Okay, thank you.
So then begs the question, the consultant finds the problem, the problem is work that was done poorly or incorrectly or designed. Is there a recovery of this somewhere down the line?
Yes, we expect to take some of these costs and backcharge them to the contractor that's performing the work and requiring the repairs.
Thank you.
Welcome.
You covered all my questions.
Good, then we don't have to hear from you, so we don't go long. I will entertain a motion, entertain a motion for passing 5.3 then. A motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Wright. Seeing no more discussion, we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
That was good.
Teed it up. All right. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisor yes vote. Next, we have 5.8. Trustee Wright.
The reason why I asked that to be polled is that, is that, look at it, it looks like we're paying for something that this should have come to the board last month. I mean, it says that, why didn't this come to the board last month? Because it was supposed to have been done on June 14th. And now, this is July 20th.
Yes, in June, we came to the board with a notice of completion, and it was our intention to have this change order request with that notice of completion. And I apologize, somewhere through the process of developing our board agenda items, this was not included. Very astute.
Okay, no increase, okay. Second.
All right. Got a motion and a second, a motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Jamal. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisor yes. Moving on to 6.1, vacancy in trustee area four. We have to, we have to do a resolution to either A, order a special election, or B, call for an appointment of a provisional board member. It is important to note that if we do the special election, the information there as to how much that costs is in the exhibits. And for clarification, because this was a confusion for some that we will now make sure everyone understands, whoever, if we decide to go with an appointment, whoever gets appointed would have to run again in 2016, November of 2016, and then again in 2018, two years later, in order to stay in the rotation of four trustees and three trustees. So the appointment would be good from, until the appointment date, up until the November of election of 16, and then again, they would run in November of 18. If we were to opt to go to a special election, that special election would be good, or that person who got elected would be in that position until 2018. So they would run until, they would run in 2018. So just to clarify what the resolutions say, because there was some confusion, the way they were written. With that, I would recognize trustee Lang. I think, I think the way we have to do it is, before we can discuss it, there has to be a motion and a second as to which option we would prefer to go to. Is that what you're requesting to do, or did you have questions?
I had a concern that I wanted to express regarding my preference on the choices.
Yeah, I think, I don't think we can do that until there's a motion on the table, unless there's, unless it's just clarification of the options.
I'll make a motion, if you need one.
All right, well, let me make sure what you're asking. Because I'd like to give you the opportunity, but it has to be...
Sure, let me, let me mention what I plan to bring up for discussion when the appropriate time comes for me to do that. And that is that, you know, I'm obviously more supportive of the, well, I would normally always want this decided, to be decided by the electorate rather than an appointment from the board, for the same reasons that I expressed the last time when we made the appointment for trustee J's seat. But having said that, and looking at the cost of what a special election would result in, you know, obviously, I'm mindful of that and would probably support the appointment process. My concern is, is I can't be there for the date on which we have indicated in exhibit C that that appointment would occur. And so, you know, I'm concerned about approving that and not being able to be involved in the process.
I have something to ask.
And we would certainly want you to be a part of that process, it's just that it's that same timeline thing that we run into.
Right, so I'm interested in hearing more about that before I...
Okay. Well, I can answer that, since that's not part of a motion. We had to go with that date, or we didn't have to go to that date. We decided to go with that date because it would give enough time for the notice to go out for the appointment, as well as to receive the applications from those that are interested in the position. But after our last process, the way it ran, and the projected number of people that may be interested in this position, we didn't want to run into a position, or a situation that we had last time, where we felt like we had to make a decision that night, that we would not have an opportunity to come back at a later date, that it had to be done that night because we were running up against that deadline. So we tried to give ourselves a little bit of cushion, whereas if we did need to reconvene on the issue, we could do it prior to the board, the regular board meeting that month, and still make the timeline. Is that correct? So, and we couldn't do it really any earlier, because then it doesn't give... And we couldn't do it really any earlier because then it doesn't give time for people to apply and so forth. So, yeah, I agree, we'd love to have everyone there, but I think we're caught by that timeline. And just speaking of timelines, we missed being able to put this on a regular scheduled election in November by a day. Had we gotten the letter a day or two before, this would be, you and I know where we stand on that, because it wouldn't cost us this at all. But unfortunately, it is what it is.
I was just wondering, isn't it possible, yeah, thank you for that explanation, isn't it possible to get a date that all of the board members could attend? That's what I thought we were trying to do.
We, we could, but the, I'm sorry, you were returning back, like, the Sunday before the regular meeting?
I'm returning back the Saturday before our Monday meeting.
And we can't do it on the Sunday.
I see.
And if we put it on the regular meeting day, then we run into the same exact timeline crunch that we met last time.
I guess my question would be, is could we do it right after our meeting but before the end of the month? Is that a possibility from a timing standpoint?
You mean, so instead of doing it before the meeting, do it after?
Right. I mean, again, this position has been vacant for quite some period of time effectively in terms of attendance at board meetings. So, but anyways, that, that's the concern that I have.
So if we, well, we could do kind of both where we met before, and then if it did need more time, we could reconvene that special session after the regular session was over.
Yeah, and I appreciate, you know, obviously wanting to try and accommodate my schedule. This was obviously something that I, that has come up suddenly and unfortunately, due to the, you know, where I'll be in, I'm just not able to come back any sooner.
Yeah. So, anyways.
Well, I concur with trustee Lang in that we had a situation, unfortunately, a few months ago where we had to make a decision similar to this and I think under other circumstances that we would go to an election, have the electorate choose. So given the costs that would be associated to the district, I, you know, that, I think that that would be the preferable option in terms of having an appointment. And I think the other information, Mr. President, you provided in that the, if we choose that option and the person would have to stand for election in 2016 and then again in 2018. So there's some level of comfort to know that that, whoever is appointed, should that person decide to stand for election, they'd have to stand so right away and then, and again in two years. Should we continue talking about this date or, or should we move ahead with the motion or potential motion here?
I, I mean, I think we worked with staff to find the date that best works with the timeline as, as best we could. And, and it, I, I want to say that our deadline is, our, our regular scheduled meeting is, what, the 24th? And our deadline is the 26th. So if we didn't resolve it that night, we'd have to call a special meeting on the 25th or the 26th, and I think that would be, that would be tough. So that's why, I think that's why we knew we needed to meet, we needed to have a special meeting before the regular meeting in case we needed the regular meeting to finish the process. The other, the other thing was, is we thought it might be good if we do make the decision on the night of the 21st? Or 19th? Is that when, the, the special meeting is the 19th? If we did make a decision that day, that person doesn't necessarily get sworn in then, they'd get sworn in at the regular meeting before closed session and then be able to attend instead of it being this whirlwind, like it, you know, changing names and all that gives staff time to adjust as well. So I think that was part of the idea behind that. So trustee Milchger, did you have any more questions or are you ready to move?
That's, I'm ready to move forward.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion for either option A or option B. Option A being a special election, option B being the appointment of a provisional board member.
So I, I move option B, the appointment of a board member to replace Nancy Padberg.
And I second that.
So I have a motion and a second. I did want to bring up, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I'm bringing it up anyway. I think it's well-known that I agree with you 100% on the preference to do an election. And part of the reason we're doing this is the prohibitive cost of that election, which then begs the question of when do we start thinking about changing to being elected by area rather than at large? Because not only is it expensive for us in making decisions like this, and unfortunately, we've had to make this decision, what, four times now since I've been on the board, and I've only been here six years, that, that we're almost like putting ourselves in a position where we don't have a choice because of that prohibitive cost. Not to mention whoever does get this position is now going to have to incur that cost for a campaigning in an at-large election in two-year time cycle, a year from, almost a year from when they get appointed. Now granted, they have a slight advantage by being in, you know, an incumbent, but it's still expensive if they get challenged. And so, I don't know, again, I don't know where the appropriate time is to bring this up or how we decided, or if we need to have a special meeting to discuss it. I'll work with the chancellor on that, but I think this is something that has been bugging me since we've been into this process because of the cost. And, and the only solution I see is to go by area instead of at large. So just something to mull over in the back of your head for a later time. Trustee Jamal?
Well, since you raised the issue, and I want to support my president at all costs. I, I think, I think this area, I think this needs a little bit of study. I, I would not be one, I'm not sure where I would fall on the issue of this. In fact, I, I understand the costs, believe me, I think we all do, associated with a district that includes 900,000 residents and 610, 620,000 registered voters. I understand that, believe me, I think we all do. On the other hand, I think, and there are city councils that, that run by, run by area, other local agencies that do as well, I think the one thing the at-large candidacy does do is assure that all, the entire district is always represented. And that's, to me, a very powerful argument for the existing model. It doesn't deal with costs at all, clearly prohibitive both for candidates and, and also for the district itself, but I think it does give some assurances that you know that when all of us are here on this dais, that I may live in Mission Viejo, and my area may be Mission Viejo and Rancho Santa Margarita, but the people who live in Irvine and Tustin and Lake Forest and Laguna Hills also know that they have a say in, in our decision-making. So I, I understand what you're saying, but I think does require some careful consideration. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess I messed up because I wasn't looking for a debate on that issue. I was just saying it was what we needed to start. I know, but I said to start thinking about it, not do it tonight. Because I have counterarguments to that, but I'm not going to do them. But anyway, the, the motion at hand is for an appointment. Seeing no further requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous yes vote with one abstention and a student advisory yes vote. All right, so with that, I have a paper that we will all need to sign to then get sent to the registrar of voters, I believe, resolution, so I'll get those to you. In the meantime, we have 6.2, ATEP Development Master Planning Services Agreement. Any information we need beyond that? So I'll entertain a motion for 6.2. Anyone? All right, a motion from trustee Wright. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, request to speak from trustee Lang.
Okay, just, just to clarify, we are on 6.2 now, are we not?
Yes. ATEP Master Planning Services Agreement.
So again, I have a question on this item. Let's see, what's this thing? Really along the same lines of my question previously, it's a substantial amendment to the contract. And I want to be certain that, again, we would have hired the same consultant, you know, given the substantial amount of increase from the original contracted amount before voting on this item.
Okay, sure. Yes, the reason we would have hired the consultant again, and the reason for the increase was a, a duration in the length of the contract, it nearly doubled due to additional concerns relative to coordination issues with the city of Tustin. We found new information during the development of the framework plan relative to the Bell Avenue development. How we might coordinate our property with commercial interests became more complicated than we initially thought that it would be. So it was a much more complicated process than we thought going into it. And I think you would agree, after having seen the presentation recently, that it was a very successful outcome.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Jamal?
A follow-up to that, not, not in the selection of the contractor, but the, was it not, you know, the, the increase in complexity, was that just not foreseen?
It wasn't expected that this process would be addressed, the complexity of the issues wouldn't be addressed during the development framework. As we got into it, it became more and more obvious that this process was a very good place for us to start considering things like whether or not we would put utilities in the Bell Avenue corridor, how the intersections at Bell Avenue would be addressed with regard to this property. We hadn't, because the city of Tustin hadn't completely committed to how they were going to be developing Bell Avenue, we hadn't yet considered it fully relative to our development. So that was new. Yes, we always did have an intention to work with commercial or non-educational partnerships as we got into the development of the plan. How that integration would happen became a lot more complicated than we thought it would be in relationship to how buildings were placed, education, non-education, whether they would be side by side or whether they would be separated from one another, how parking structures would sit on the project. In community college planning, we planned for parking to always happen on the outside of a, a design. As we got into the consideration for commercial integration, we really wanted to consider whether parking was better on the outside or the inside with the development being on the perimeter because of how commercial businesses would better be visible, be more visible. So the complications were greater than they are in normal college planning.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, 6.3, Saddleback College Science Building Project. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to vote. All right, so seeing no more requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Trustee Jay, voting. All right, we have a unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes. Okay, 6.3, Saddleback College Science Building Project.
So moved.
Motion from trustee Jamal, second from trustee Wright.
He's trying to speed things up.
All right, trustee Lang?
Yes, the, I, I guess the issue that I had on this one is, is that back in, on April 27th, when I guess we considered this, we were all thinking, this is great, we've got a 200 and almost $19,000 reduction in this contract. But, but on, by that date, we had already had two items that were going to increase that, the contract by like a million and $59,000. And so just from a timing standpoint, it didn't sit very well with me. I'm, I'm looking at core number 4044 and 182.
Yes, so relative to 044, the reason that we didn't bring this to you sooner is that it's a pretty new system for the campuses. The colleges had, both have made a determination to use these electronic key locks for security reasons and didn't yet have a fully designed or developed system. So they spent a great deal of time looking into the design of the system and ensuring that the best electronic system would be made available for the campus. So all of that was being considered, and then after it was resolved, it was necessary to obtain a price from the sciences project contractor based on those decisions. So it took some time.
Well, except that the, should, is the date that's on the left of 4715 not an accurate one as to whether we identified the cost associated with that?
I'm not sure about the answer to that, but I do have someone in the audience who can help us with that if you'd like to hear from him.
And then the other date is 424, which granted was just a few days before the board took action to reduce the total contract.
Yes. May I present to you Dave McLaughlin, who is the contractor's primary representative on the sciences project?
Yes, thank you for your input on this item.
Good evening. The 4715 date is when we finalized the pricing and the actual impact to the project. The identification was done back in roughly June or July of 2014 of the need for the system.
So we really did know what the cost was at this time?
We didn't know until April of 2015.
Right, but we certainly knew by the board meeting, which was April 27th, when we approved the reduction in the contract.
And it's just that this time, this is when we were going through the pricing and schedule impacts, because this also impacted the schedule by 30 calendar days.
I'm not, okay, I'm, I'm not quite sure how that's relevant to
To determine the schedule issues?
Yes, we were working through all the schedule impacts and the ordering of the door frames, prep the door frames, all that. That identified when the actual schedule impact at that point in time. We were, we're working beyond the 47. When was the board date that you're referring to that this didn't come to?
27th of April.
27th was the board meeting.
So 20 days later is when we voted.
Uh huh.
And it was on the agenda four days before that. So I guess the question is how did this price that was known on the 7th, regardless of scheduling aspect, how it was not on what we voted on on the 27th?
I would have to look at this price, but I expect also the, the college, the district were evaluating that price at that time, making sure that it was, it was appropriate. That's when I would have submitted it to the district.
Okay, so that, that helps me a lot. The date that you see here then is the date that the contractor provided the cost to, to us, the district. And there's due diligence that have, we don't accept any cost at face value, so I'm sure there was a lot of time spent confirming that that was an accurate number.
Okay.
I get it. All right, are we good? Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes. 6.4, Board Policy Revision, Personal Leave Without Pay Except For Approval. I assume these are with the changes from trustee Jamal and trustee Lang from last time. And now it is up for approval.
Move approval.
Motion from trustee Milchger, second from trustee Wright. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes vote. 6.5, Contract With Tableau Software. Motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Jamal. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Sorry, Jim, you don't get to speak. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes. 6.6, Saddleback College Gymnasium and Baseball Stadium Bleacher Replacement Project.
So moved.
Motion from trustee Jamal.
Second.
Second from trustee Wright. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes. 6.7, Saddleback College Adopt Resolution 1534. Intention to enter into agreement with, and set a public hearing Intention to enter into agreement with, and set a public hearing for San Diego gas and electric easement. I have a motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Jay. Seeing no requests for information, go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes vote. 6.8 Authorization Of Payment To Trustee Absent From Board Meeting.
So moved.
Motion from trustee Jamal, second from trustee Wright. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes. 6.9 Saddleback College Office Of Instruction Reorganization. I have a motion, a second please. I need a motion first.
So move.
I have a motion from trustee Milchker, a second from trustee Jay. A request to speak from trustee Lang.
Really was just a question to President Burnett, and that is what other positions, if any, may be contemplated with this reorganization?
Yeah, thank you. If you look at the...
Maybe you can walk me through the work chart.
Yeah, if you look at the exhibit, and you'll notice it's, it's fairly complex and complicated, and we tried to simplify it, and I think we did okay job considering it. It's an organization and a function chart, so you get an idea of the breadth of the areas coupled with the direct reports. The pink are the direct reports. Those are all the personnel. So if you look at the two positions, you can see the pink who are the direct reports. It's almost 20 of them. On the one hundred, the AVP, if you notice, they have several, I think there's three boxes that say proposed, I'm sorry, four boxes that say proposed. The reason why they are proposed is because the college, working with our senate, our academic senate, classified senate, and everybody, is going to be deciding, once this is done, is how we are going to organize a few areas. First is the online education. Second would be library. Third would be the honors and Phi Theta Kappa areas. So that's why you see proposed. Those are not positions just yet. In addition to the fact that we have a dean, as you know, a dean, interim dean of online education and learning resources, that position actually will be restructured to be one or two of those, or three even potentially, of those director positions. In addition to that is the, as you notice, it says either a director or a coordinator. As you may know, a director is a classified manager position. A coordinator is a faculty coordinator position. So it's a full-time faculty position. So that's the other decision that we are still working through with our, with our faculty, our administrators, on how that's going to come. So the, it's kind of a, to show you, there's a lot of, the dominos that impact, once this position's through, the new AVP with the VPI with our senate and our college process will come up with the recommendations going forward. But the chance of maybe one position more being in, it's really going to be redirected of another position, and it may be just a faculty position. Does that answer?
So it's, it's four or it's not four?
It won't be. It's probably not going to be four. They're just proposed, but we don't know how we're going to get, configure them. And the biggest one is, should they be a faculty position? Should a director take one or two of the areas? But it certainly will not be a dean, a dean level. So the dean of interim online education and learning resources will more likely will go away, and will go down a dean position.
Thank you.
So, Mr. President, I'll defer to trustee Wright, let him go ahead of me.
Okay.
I did write a letter to the chancellor on this. I had a number of questions. In fact, I had four issues I wanted to talk about. And I met with Dr. Burnett just right before this meeting, so, around 3 o'clock, so I got answers. And some of those were what you had asked for, David, about how many proposed, what was going to happen to the dean of online, because I was led to believe that position would go away. But I got my answers, so I support this. I think it's well needed because this, this is a big job.
Okay, thank you for your input on that.
So I just need a clarification on this. Is Exhibit A, is that the way it is now, and Exhibit B is what you want to go to, or is it vice versa?
No, both Exhibit A and Exhibit B are the way we want it to go. Those are the new proposed of the two positions. That would be the new V, Vice President of Instructions, Direct Reports, and then that's Exhibit B, and Exhibit A is the AVP.
So, so Exhibit B is...
They're both proposed.
Got it.
Now, if you want to look at it, combine both those together, that's the vice president's right now responsibilities.
Right, I get you.
So you can see how enormous it is.
I get you. Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes. 6.10 Academic Personnel Actions.
No changes.
No changes.
Move approval.
Motion from trustee Milchker, second from trustee Wright. Request to speak from trustee Jamal.
Yes, I just want to thank the administration for making a change in how the data is presented in the agenda now. Whereas before, I think there were stipends that were listed in the document but were not totaled, and I think the totaling the stipends, both on, I think, a monthly and an annual basis, is very useful. So thank you for doing that. Because it's not an insubstantial number. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes. 6.11 Classified Personal Actions.
There are some changes. If you could look on Exhibit A on page 11 and 12, but it started on page 11. Colleges asked that we remove item 2B. So it'd be on page 11, C2B.
Page 11.
So that would eliminate grant project manager.
Page 11?
Page 11 of Exhibit A. So Exhibit A, page 11 of 18, underneath reclassification, which is Section C. If we could remove C2B, which says eliminate project manager.
It's on page 11.
We're not eliminating.
Right, yeah. Yeah, it's like eliminate, the elimination.
No, we're going to keep that person because we, we want to make a change on the next page. We want that person to have a job to stay in. So we want to keep that. So we're eliminating the item of eliminate grant project manager.
Just that one, not all of B?
Correct. All of B, all 2B. That, it's 2B or...
Not 2B.
So there's two eliminates, there's two eliminates in B, so you're eliminating both eliminates.
Yes, no, we're eliminating 2B only.
Right, but there's two, there's two positions eliminated in 2B.
Correct. So we're eliminating all of 2B.
So we're not creating anything either.
That's correct. Yes.
Double negative.
Yes, I am. All right, and then, and then what?
And then on page 12.
Just a second, David, is this a grant-funded position?
Yes.
Page 12?
On page 12, you want to eliminate all of CI, CB, and I. So the very top three sections there.
So we're not promoting anyone, we're not eliminating anyone, we're not promoting anyone.
Not on that page.
Got it. Next?
That's it.
That's it?
That's right.
All right.
So I'll move approval of the agenda item, okay?
As amended?
As amended.
All right, I got a motion to approve as amended from trustee Milchker, a second from trustee Jamal. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, with one student advisory yes. 6. nothing, because we're done with those. 7. 7.1 Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Speakers. Any questions on that? 7.2 CCCT Student Trustee Member Election. You running? Nope, you can self-nominate. You could have self-nominated, but it's too late now.
It's too late, yeah.
All right. So we don't have to do anything there. 7.3 Basic Aid Report.
There's no changes from last month. Next month, you'll see all of the items that are proved in the coming year budget.
Got it. 7.4 Facilities Plan Status Report. No questions there? All right. Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Good evening, President Prendergast, members of the Board of Trustees and Chancellor Portner. Summer semester is in its fifth of eight weeks, and I feel fortunate to have a great group of students this summer, dedicated, focused, and that seems to be the norm for this summer, so I'm very encouraged by our students. The Academic Senate Executive Board is gathering this week to work on the agenda for our first fall semester meeting during Professional Development Week in August. The Accreditation Committee is working through the summer, collecting information for the upcoming report. The Academic Senate supported the new AVP position, so I want to thank you for your understanding of the need for this position and your approval. And finally, the faculty is looking forward to a timely, mutually agreeable contract resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Speaking of which, Faculty Association? Don't want to come down and speak? No, no, not. Mark is up there. All right. All right. IVC Faculty Association, or Academic Senate, sorry.
Kathy Schmider, Academic Senate IVC. I want to thank Marcia for reminding us that summer is, the end of summer is fast approaching. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome. But really, you're, you're correct. We're already planning the details as Blake has indicated of, for the two weeks before classes begin. Linda told you a little bit about Laser Week, and then there's Flex Week as always, including some activities that both colleges have together, and many activities that each of our colleges do, so that you have to choose from the various menus. I know that makes it difficult for you to get to everything that you want to go to. Laser Week, I just want to mention also, is mostly being run out of student services, but again, as Linda mentioned to you, there are other, there are disciplined faculty members who are also involved. And we're hoping that this will really help our new students hit the ground running, give them good advice, the sorts of advisories and preparations that will help them be more successful as they begin this new kind of education, educational experience. And of course, although we can see the end of summer, we're still deeply immersed in the, in our summer session, and anybody who drives by either of the colleges can see how, although the, the parking lots are not as full as during the rest of the semesters, they're still pretty darn full for summer. So there are a lot of students who are taking advantage of, of what we offer at the two colleges. I did want to make one comment about student success and the report card. And it's been, it was somewhat discussed by our colleagues, but I want to point out a little bit more of a faculty point, point of view, or at least the point of view of this one faculty member. I won't say that I speak for everybody. We need to remember that we should never sacrifice rigor and excellence in our education for somehow attaining better scorecards and better completion numbers. It's really important that we not do that. I certainly don't want to cross a bridge or be treated by somebody in the emergency room who was quote-unquote "successful" in a class because a college needed to increase their success numbers. I don't know about you, but that's just my feeling about bridges and emergency rooms, buildings, other things like that. It's also important to recall, as again Marcia pointed out, that many of our students, in some areas more so than others, are not in coming here intending to complete things the way that the state defines completion. That's certainly true in ASL, which was discussed at some length. It's also true for many of our working students for whom one or a small number of classes or one of our small certificates, but not one of the ones that's acknowledged by the state, these 18 or more unit certificates. But maybe a three-unit certificate or a nine-unit certificate is what they need to advance at work or to get the job that they want. And that's their educational goal, which we've always respected, and we need to continue to respect. And I appreciate the work that some of our colleagues, in particular Craig Hayward, but others as well, are doing at the state level to try to convince the state that these other kinds of completion, or not even completion, but simply personal advancement are also valuable, are part of the mission of the community college, and are part of the mission of our district and our community colleges. But as we interpret our data, and it's certainly important to do that, I think we need to keep these other considerations in mind. Thank you.
Vice Chancellor, Technology and Learning Services, standing in.
Dr. Burmitch, he's out of town, but we have no report tonight.
Okay. Vice Chancellor, Human Resources.
Human Resources has gone through a, stepped up a game on staff development. So we've been invited by President Burnett, President Rockmore to speak on different topics that, with their management staff, it's been very successful. Dr. Worley had us over at the dean's retreat. But one of the most enjoyable things was a student career expo at IVC, so I got to speak to students for the first time, and I hit the academic level really high when I told them that after college, your mom's not going to wake you up anymore. So that was rather enjoyable because they have to go out and get a real job. So we, we talked about how to get a job and so on. That was excellent and a lot of fun. So that was at IVC for their, their counseling department, put that on. It was very good. Thank you.
All right.
Hi. Kim McCord, Executive Director of Fiscal Services. Dr. Fitzsimmons included a budget update for you. It's a written report. Those are still estimates for South Orange, and we expect next week, they're having some budget workshops. The state will be doing that. We should get some more exact numbers on how the budget will impact our district. And also, after months and months of hard work, July 1st, we did go live with Workday financials, and so far, so good.
All right. Irvine Valley College Classified Senate? Not here. CSEA?
Thank you, Mr. President, Scott Ferguson-Green, President, CSEA, Chapter 586. A week from today, we're going to begin our annual conference, our 89th Annual CSEA Conference. One of the things that we do from the very start, at the beginning of the conference, is honor the veterans that have served this country, whether it be a CSEA member or a family member of a CSEA member. It's a moving experience for CSEA to do, but they always start out the conference with the honoring of the veterans. Recently, I had a chance to go back to my home state of Pennsylvania, and the unit of my cousin, Kenneth Ferguson, they honored him. He was a Vietnam veteran that served a couple of tours in Vietnam. He received two Purple Hearts. And I actually saw his unit remember after all these years. So that was nice to see. One of the things we will be doing at the CSEA Conference, we're going to be debating and discussing some resolutions that different chapters from across the state are bringing forward. They're down to six particular resolutions, and there are four that are, are very important to the political process. For example, mandatory rest breaks for classified employees. CSEA seeks legislation to add language to public sector laws regarding mandatory rest breaks for classified employees. They also are going to discuss a resolution to repeal or revise pension reform requires that CSEA pursue opportunities to create work for benefit programs for retiring classified school employees that would not enact reinstatement from retirement in lieu of the 180-day waiting period that took effect January 1st, 2013, in the pension reform law. They're also going to discuss the equal and fair representation for SCLEA hearing requires that CSEA sponsor legislation that would add to SCLEA protections, the right of an employee to select at least two people of the employees choosing to represent him/her at a SCLEA hearing. And finally, they'll be discussing revision that requires the Policy 610, which is a legal procedure that has to do with labor law. And they're going to look to amend the change, the order of the provisions concerning chapter approvals of initial proposals within the policy. It will not, however, change the meaning of the policy itself or affect labor law. So those are some of the legislation, or I'm sorry, the resolutions that we're going to discuss in support of legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Saddleback College Classified Senate?
Good evening. Mike Sauer, past president of the Classified Senate at Saddleback College, and here filling in tonight, so it's good to be back. I want to first acknowledge and thank trustee Padberg for her years of service. She will be missed. And let's see, for a report, I just wanted to mention back in June, the Classified Senate Executive Team and a few other members of the senate went to our Classified Leadership Institute, we call CLI. It's our annual statewide senate organization, and we attended our Leadership Institute, which was three days of information sessions, roundtable discussions, and various brainstorming activities to generate senate growth, and also participate in statewide resolutions for student success and professional development. And just a little plug there, it was a great event, and we really appreciate the support. Thanks.
Thank you. And we do have one of our ASG representatives. Thank you for coming.
Sure, thank you. Hello, everyone. So just to give you a little bit of a...
So just to give you a little bit of a report on what we've been doing. We're still building our team, everything's almost completed. We have our retreat in mid-August, 13th and 14th of August. So we're going to be focusing on team empowerment, team building, and hopefully getting everybody to take some initiative on their own this year. We can't wait to get started to work on a number of different issues once the school year gets started. But everybody's scattered out of town doing internships, so it's a little bit hard to gather everyone right now. That's all, thanks.
All right, we are adjourned at 8:26. Have a good evening.